Good evening, everybody. Welcome. My name is Christina Sanamo. I'm a music teacher at Salzman's Memorial. The first piece that our fifth and sixth grade choir will perform this evening is a Polynesian folk song entitled Tango. And the conversational nature of this call and response piece has really fostered a nice sense of camaraderie with the students behind us. So very special to see. Special thank you to several members of our music faculty who will be accompanying us on some percussion instruments for this piece. And with that, we hope you enjoy Tango. Tango, 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 Tango. Gift me by fire, gift me by fire.
Check. Okay. Good morning. Welcome to this morning's meeting of the Board of Education. Pursuant to Executive Order 202.1 and subsequent orders closing district schools issued by the Honorable Andrew M. Cuomo, Governor of the State of New York, signed March 12, 2020, and due to the concerns of the Board of Education for the health and safety of the community emanating from the current COVID-19 pandemic, there will be no in-person public access to the aforementioned board meeting, and instead, the meeting will be livestreamed and recorded. Access to livestream can be had by accessing the school district's website for a link that will bring you to a YouTube site, and the recording of the meeting can be accessed on www.farmingdaleschools.org. In addition, the public participation portion of the meeting shall be suspended by board resolution. Mrs. D'Amico, may I have a motion to suspend public participation?
I make a motion that pursuant to the aforementioned executive orders, the Board is suspending the public participation portion of the meeting, and therefore, accordingly, there will be no public participation at this board meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. So, before we start the meeting, I wanted to bring up something that's on tonight's agenda. So today, on the agenda, the Board will be approving a new five-year contract for our Superintendent Paul Defendini. Three years ago, the Board appointed Mr. Defendini as our Superintendent. Over the past three years, we have seen firsthand his tireless devotion to creating a positive environment across the district, the personal connections he makes with the students, staff, and community members, as well as the energy and passion he shares to lead our incredible district. Through his leadership, the district continues to maintain a strong financial status and serves as a model for being innovators in education, whether it's in long-term capital planning, curriculum and instruction, or student-centered learning environments. Farmingdale is well-known for providing opportunities and power and support our students, no matter what their learning interests are. The Board is incredibly proud of the progress that has been made, especially in recognition of the journey we have been on together. As a Board, we are both confident and truly excited to support Paul and the entire district. Paul, on the behalf of the entire, the Board and the entire district, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. I appreciate those comments very much, and as you would expect, as I did, as I, you know, the thanks goes to the team. You know, we have something special here, the team that's on this call, you know, Board members, my cabinet, administrators, teachers, and every other support staff member that works in this district as a part of this process. And I couldn't be any prouder of what we've accomplished over the course of the last 16 months. It has not been an easy journey, but together, I think that we've done some pretty outstanding work for our students and creating an environment that's far better than where we could have ever imagined it to be, you know, only, only 10 months ago. So I'm proud of everything that we've accomplished. I couldn't be any more thankful to the Board for their support, and to have, to have, to have a contract in front of me for the next five years is, is an unbelievable gesture on the Board's part, and I am eternally grateful for your, for your continued support. So thank you very much.
And thank you, Mrs. Ovi. I did forget for having my stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, united. Okay. So, Mr. Defendini, if you would proceed.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Goldberg. So just a couple of updates for the Board before we begin. Again, I just wanted to thank the Board for taking time out of their schedule today. Obviously, we had a planned meeting on Wednesday that didn't go according to plan, and we had a very short timeframe in order to get this meeting on, you know, on schedule. There's a tremendous amount of business that has to be done, contracts, agreements that have to be approved for our ability to continue to operate even as early as Monday. So again, I know it's extremely difficult for everyone to rearrange their calendars. I see based upon your backgrounds, you're in all kinds of places right now, you know, making this happen for us. And again, just thank you for catering on such short notice to get this meeting on. We do need it for, for, for things that are happening for our students on Monday. So we appreciate that very much. Again, another thanks to the community for the budget support. Congratulations to our reappointed Board members that will be beginning a new three-year term, starting on July 1 of 2021. Mr. Giudano, right, Miss Sodi, and Miss Lively, I'm sorry, geez, Louise, what the heck is the matter with me? Mr. Espinoza and Miss Lively will begin a new three-year term, starting July 1, 2021. So congratulations on, you know, their beginning their term. Congratulations to the school district, and thank you to the community for their support, specifically to the PTA for taking the opportunity to provide us with opportunities to communicate with the community at large and for their supporting the budget. That obviously goes a very long way. We had a 70% approval rate on the budget, and that speaks to, again, the community's support of our financial planning. Thank you to Mike and team as well for the work that he did in getting us to this point from a financial standpoint. So thank you to, to Mike and the team. Just a couple of updates, graduation and moving up ceremonies, very excited. Year-end is coming, and we have all of our ceremonies are going to take place in a, in a similar format to what you have seen in prior years. We were able to figure out how to navigate this in a way where we're going to have parents, you know, and/or guardians be a part of our services. So our elementary schools are going to be run without basically a hitch. They'll be over at Howitt Middle School. In, in the evening hours, students and two guests will be able to attend. There's no requirements, you know, from the state of New York for those ceremonies. So we will, we will follow the rules as we always have since the very beginning, the state of New York. There's no requirements there. There are some requirements that we have for our middle school and our high school ceremonies. Again, I've sent out, Mr. Gavales has sent out, and Dr. Thompson has sent out correspondence to the community, laying some of those things out. We've been able to simplify this process, because again, as you might know, the state is requiring certain things to happen prior to people being able to attend ceremonies that are over a certain number of guests. I think we've streamlined that pretty simply by creating a very simple one-page form, not getting ourselves too into the weeds with any of this stuff. And we'll be able to simply exchange four tickets for the, you know, for the received form for Farmingdale High School, for our graduation, which will be held at Stewart Stadium at Hofstra University. Four guests will be able to come, and again, it's just an exchange of a form that has to be signed off on, noting the fact that parents acknowledge that there are requirements that are beset upon schools for our graduation ceremony. And then same thing for the middle school. And again, that's based upon numbers, right? The size of the ceremony, because those are bigger ceremonies, there's a different requirement in place. So again, we're, we're working with our community to create as seamless a process as possible to allow our, our parents the ability to celebrate with their children, our moving up and our graduation ceremonies. So that's exciting. Earlier this month, with thanks to Dr. Olson and Dr. Ripley for organizing with Mr. Green Mamanu a conversation around math curriculum, we had an engaging conversation, some small groups, with some parents that had some insights that they were looking to share with us over the math curriculum. We do have a second meeting that we're going to be putting on the agenda before the end of the year to share back with our community and our parents, you know, what we're going to be looking to do differently in response to their feedback. So thank you for the feedback, and you could certainly look for a meeting to pop up on your calendars within the next week or so, where we can finish that conversation and prepare ourselves for the beginning of the 2122 school year. Earlier, again, last week, we had our, what I thought was an unbelievably well-run Wall of Fame ceremony. I just, I, I can't thank enough Jed Herman, Assistant Principal over at Farmingdale High School, who is the chair, the committee who did the work associated with reviewing all of the candidates. We were able to get in two years. We wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to celebrate not only this year's candidates, but last year's because of the pandemic. Obviously, we weren't allowed to have any kind of a live ceremony, so we weren't able to celebrate them. So we brought all them back, and we were able to celebrate both groups. So with thanks and with congratulations in 2021 to Mr. Russ Katanzaro, Christine, Dr. Christine Latherys, Ms. Christine Lucarelli, were our 21 winners. Again, esteemed Dailers who have done tremendous things in their lives following their graduation from Farmingdale High School. And our 2020 winners, Dr. Maria, Elaine DeSimone, Ms. Tracy Visieri, one of our own teachers here at Woodrow Parkway, and Mr. Glenn Weiss, a very esteemed producer, who's done a lot of different, large events, you know, in the world. So congratulations to all of our Wall of Fame candidates. They certainly deserve special recognition. Quick update on the progress of the Aquatic Center. Excellent progress being made at the, at the Aquatic Center. Again, all the steel is actually up now. You know, the, the, the last of the steel was actually erected yesterday. So, so steel is done, and what you're now going to see is the masons, and the contractors are on-site closing the building in. So if you actually are driving by and you take a peek, you'll see the community pool is the first piece of work that's being done. Within the next few days, you're going to see that the community pool will be totally closed in. The blockwork is going up, and they're closing in those facilities. At the same time that they're doing that, all of the trades are cranking away on the inside. So you got your plumbers, your HVAC companies, they're all doing their work on the inside. All the duct work you can see coming to fruition. You can see all the plumbing fixtures that are all being installed. We're making really great progress. Everyone is really, the site is abuzz with activity, and we're excited, you know, with the progress that's happening over there. Summer programs are in full swing. We have a number of summer programs that are going to be going on. They're all 100% live. So we are excited about that. We're excited for the hope that we'll be able to maintain that entirely live instructional environment for September as well. Hopefully, the summer is an indication of where we're headed in September. But again, we have our, our credit-bearing program over at Farmingdale High School that's up and running. We have our extended school year program over at Albany Avenue that is up and running. We have our driver's education program that is, again, fully up and running, and we have all three of our ENL programs, Woodrow Parkway, Salzman East Memorial, I'm sorry, Northside, and Howitt Middle School. We'll all have, you know, a program for some of our ENL students transitioning into the September 21 school year. So with thanks to the team for figuring all of that out. That has certainly been another big lift for us. But again, that is 100% live, no virtual component to any of those programs for our students for this summer. And, and the last piece that I have is just, we look forward to working with the Board of Education to, to consider, you know, what needs to be done in order for us to continue or to go back to live meetings. We appreciate and respect the civil discourse at public meetings, and we are, we'll certainly be working with you collectively to figure out a manner in which we can continue to have those kinds of opportunities for our community in the future. So again, more to come on that as we continue our conversations as to how to return to live meetings. Again, there's not a person on this call that doesn't value the importance of civil discourse. We just have to figure out how we can get that done in a way that doesn't interrupt the ability for us to do the business. Because again, there's, there's all sorts of things that are part of our business that are required for us to be able to operate. So, and, and again, just one more thank you before we end my, end my portion, just to say thank you again to the Board for making themselves available on such short notice. This is not typical for us to kind of have to put one together so quickly. But again, there are contracts and things of the sort that we need for Monday, so that there wasn't a lot of time for us to figure this out or find the right time or find the ideal time. And again, as you always do, you rearranged your schedules. I see some of you with blackboards behind you and curtains behind you and all sorts of circumstances. You're, you're at work and you're all in all kinds of different places right now, making it happen for us. So thank you for your support in making yourselves available.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Defendini. So I call for a motion to approve the minutes of the May 5 meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 5, 2021 regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I call for a motion to approve the minutes of the May 11 special meeting and public hearing.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 11, 2021 special meeting and public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I call for a motion to approve the minutes of the May 14 meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 14, 2021 special meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I call for a motion to approve the minutes of the May 17 meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 17, 2021 special meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mrs. Rogers, have we received any correspondence this month?
Yes, Mr. Goldberg, we received a number of, of emails as well as written correspondence for, for three specific topics. The first, of course, being masks, the second regarding the universal pre-K program, and then the third topic was middle school grading policy. One of the letters did include a position paper from the middle school PTA.
Thank you, Mrs. Rogers. Are there any committee reports from the Board?
Yes, Mike, I just have two things I wanted to mention. The Farmingdale Youth Council Summer Program registration is online as we speak on farmingdaleyouthcouncil.org for certain activities in the Farmingdale Youth Council Summer Program, which begins on June 28. I also just wanted to mention that the Farmingdale Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring tomorrow, Saturday, from 10 to 1 at the Farmingdale Public Library, a shred event. Everyone's welcome to come. It's free of charge, and you're able to bring about three bags or so of personal papers and such. Farmingdale Youth Council, I'm sorry, the Farmingdale Chamber of Commerce and also is giving two scholarship awards to our high school seniors for the work that they have done. So come on down and bring your papers. That's it. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you, Kathy. Anybody else like to report? I know Mrs. Defendini covered the Wall of Fame, which we all attended, which was a wonderful evening. We, we beat the weather barely on that one. Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of items 1, A through P, 2, A through H, and 3, A through G, be approved as a whole with action recorded separately.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So motion carries, and just a congratulations, Mr. Defendini. You could see your contract was in that consent agenda. Okay, may I have a motion to approve a resolution to establish a retirement contribution reserve sub-fund?
I make a motion to approve the establishment of a retirement contribution reserve sub-fund as detailed in Resolution Number 7141.
Second.
Mr. Motisi.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. A number of years ago, a few years ago, New York State passed legislation allowing school districts to reserve for, or create a reserve for the teacher's retirement system expenses. Previously, we had only been allowed by New York State law to reserve for employee retirement systems. This resolution gives us the authorization to begin to establish the reserve for, for teacher retirement expenses through excess fund balance at the end of the year. There is a maximum of 2% per year allowed for all TRS salaries, TRS eligible salaries, to a maximum of 10% of, of such expenses to the district.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Motisi. Any questions from the Board? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion to authorize the issuance and sale of revenue anticipation notes?
I make a motion to authorize the issuance and sale of revenue anticipation notes of an amount not to exceed $15 million in anticipation of the collection of revenues to be received as state aid and star payments from the state of New York in the 2021-2022 fiscal year as detailed in Resolution Number 7060.
Second.
Mr. Motisi.
Thank you. This, this resolution authorizes the district to, to go out for a short-term borrowing should there be a delay in any of the state aid payments that the district receives on an annual basis.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any questions from the Board? So this will be a roll call vote, so please say aye or nay after I call your name. Mr. Espinoza?
Aye.
Mr. Giudano?
Aye.
Mrs. Lively?
Aye.
Mr. Morales?
Aye.
Mrs. Sodi?
Aye.
Mrs. D'Amico?
Aye.
And I myself am an aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion to authorize the issuance and sale of tax anticipation notes?
I make a motion to authorize the issuance and sale of tax anticipation notes in anticipation of the collection of real estate taxes levied or to be levied for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2021, as detailed in Resolution Number 7061.
Second.
Mr. Motisi.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. Similar to the revenue anticipation notes, this is a short-term borrowing should there be any delay in tax receipts by the school district. This, again, I didn't mention this in the previous one, but if we needed the cash in order to, to continue to make our expenditures, that's the reason for these short-term borrowings.
And, and Mike, we haven't used any of these notes in a long time, correct?
Correct.
We haven't issued any?
No, we have not issued any rands or tans in the 11 years that I've been with the school district.
Oh, great. Okay. So once again, this will be a roll call vote, so please say aye or nay after I call your name. Mr. Espinoza?
Aye.
Mr. Giudano?
Aye.
Mrs. Lively?
Aye.
Mr. Morales?
Aye.
Mrs. Sodi?
Aye.
Mrs. D'Amico?
Aye.
And I myself am an aye. Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve a resolution that will transfer excess fund balance in the general fund for the period ending June 30, 2021?
I make a motion to approve the following resolution. Resolves that upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that the Farmingdale Union Free School District Board of Education hereby authorizes a schedule of transfer of funds from the 2020-2021 excess fund balance in the general fund in accordance with the general municipal and/or education law.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Motisi.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. This, this allows...
Millions of, I have a ton of shit going on.
Anthony, please mute.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. This, this resolution allows the district to, as part of its year-end process, reallocate between fund balance and reserve accounts should, should we need to, to a maximum not to exceed amount. Also included with this to the Board was a copy of the district's annual reserves plan detailing all of the reserves and fund balance accounts.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the Board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion to approve a request for a mandated school zone exemption?
I make a motion to approve the following resolution. Resolved that the Farmingdale Union Free School District Board of Education approves an exemption to the mandated school zone policy by reason of a demonstrated personal and/or family hardship in accordance with Board Policy 5110.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Motisi, one more time.
One more time. Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. This, this request is, is now the second year of this request from a parent for a student that is going through a particularly difficult time. This student will be a fourth grader next year at one of our elementary schools. The parent is aware that transportation will be provided only if available, that it is the parent's responsibility to transport the student to school. If we, if the district cannot provide a bus, it's from a different zone.
Okay. Thank you. Now, they have to, the parents are reapply every year until they get into the school?
Correct. One more year, this request will be coming to us for one more year.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So we're moving to the items for discussion. So, Mr. Zaki, and I understand you have information on updates to the field trip regulation.
I do. Good morning, everybody. There is one policy regulation on the agenda for discussion today, Policy 4531R Field Trip Regulation. This policy has been vetted by our consultants at Gerson-Garcia, as well as the Policy Committee. This policy and its regulation currently resides in our Board Policy Book, and there's one very minor addition to the existing regulation. Currently, our regulation states that all permission slips are to be submitted in written form. The schools have requested that they begin using electronic permission slips. Therefore, the addition of the word "electronic" as a form of permission is being added to the regulation, along with the words electronically submitted. Moving forward, this minor addition will allow the schools the ability to use written and/or electronic parental permissions. I'm prepared to answer any questions that the Board may have at this time.
No.
Yes, I do. Thank you. This policy will be put on the consent agenda for, for July. The next two items offer information only. The annual review of the Code of Conduct is, is required by the New York State, and it has to be reviewed annually and revised as necessary to reflect changes in school policies and procedures. There are no revisions at this time. This policy is updated as necessary throughout the year. The Code of Conduct Policy 5300 is available for review by students, parents, staff, community members on the district website at all times. This is being stated for the public record that Policy 5300 is continually reviewed, satisfying that state requirement. Lastly, the District-Wide School Safety Plan. New York State requires all school districts to annually submit a written District-Wide School Safety Plan. The District-Wide Health and Safety Committee works diligently throughout the year to implement and update the district's safety plan. As per New York State regulations, the updated and completed draft plan for the 2122 school year is presented today for the Board's review. It is a lengthy plan that is nearly 70 pages long, and in an effort to facilitate this review, the Board was provided with the draft in their May 20 Board Update. As per state guidelines, this draft will now be placed on the district's website for 30 days, starting either this afternoon or tomorrow, for public review. If the Board or any member of the public has a question regarding that draft, they can contact my office for clarification. This draft will be added to the consent agenda for the July Board Meeting. Thank you for the time, Mr. Goldberg.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Zaki. Any questions from the Board? Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Everyone have a good day and a great weekend.